Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled and called Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, February 23rd, 2021. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Wayne Griffin, if he would, to pronounce our invocation and then, or our pledge of allegiance and then our invocation. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we give thanks for a beautiful day that you allowed us to see. Father God, I ask you for a special blessing for our city employees. Father God, wrap your loving arms around them and protect them from all dangers seen and unseen. Now, Father, if you would, we ask you to join us in this meeting. Many things we conduct in this meeting be pleasing in that sight. These are our little blessings, we actually appreciate it on Jesus' grace name. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
Yes, sir.
Council will entertain the receiving of the minutes of the council meeting from February 9th, 2021. Hmm? It's not for solace. Oh, yeah.
That's all I was... He's still running.
Old habits die. We would like to welcome Ms. Adams, who has joined us tonight in Ms. Duncan's place, and we thank her for helping us out tonight. Ms. Adams, do we have anybody up here in public forum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. We will move to the minutes of the council meeting for February 9th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So, have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council departmental reports are contained in your packet. They reflect the reporting period from January 2021. Susan Howell is going to join us for our financial report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to briefly review the general fund for the months of December and January. Starting with revenue, we collected $3.3 million in December with an additional $10.3 million in January for a year-to-date total of $17,717,000. Moving on to expenses, we had a fund balance usage of $16,000 in December, $20,000 in January, and a year-to-date total of fund balance usage of $778,000, which leads us to a year-to-date total expenditures of $16,752,000, which is 2% under budget. The cash balance as of January 31st is $14,150,000 in the general fund, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel. Thank you for your report. Mr. Mayorman, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Couple of things this evening. First, I want to remind you that, effective yesterday, we started our Neighborhood Toolshed program. This is an opportunity for the citizens of Greer that may have some code enforcement violations or other needs to rectify some code enforcement issues that don't have the means to borrow, for lack of a better term, tools from our Neighborhood Toolshed. It's a program that y'all were kind enough to fund in the last fiscal year. We bought the trailer, bought the tools, and have rolled it out, effective yesterday. And so, we're modeling this after some other cities in the state that have seen some, seen the improvements that these, that this tool shed can make. So, we're excited to see it out there. So, if you see it rolling around town, that's what it is. It'll be a good program. The second thing is, I want to thank council and our staff for a successful Budget Retreat Friday. I feel like it was a great opportunity to dialogue with council and to get some specifics on the year in review for a number of our departments. It was beneficial not only for staff, but I hope for you as well. So, I want to thank you for your time and attendance. And the last thing I want to mention to you is, a couple months ago maybe, we discussed a DEHEC finding where we were in violation for, we were in, we were in violation for an illegal dumping activity at Leesburg Peak. We had, a number of years ago, started dumping inert material off the side of a road to shore up some erosion issues. And long story short, it was not a permitted activity. The attorney, the city attorney, Mr. Hughes and I have gone round and round about it. We had a hearing with DEHEC, and we are, we had to sign the consent order that we will rectify the issue. We are putting the work out to bid. We will have a bid opening April 7th to see what that work will cost us, and I'll be bringing it back to council for approval sometime thereafter. But after a number of debated topics, we are where we are, and this order is what it is. So, we will be moving forward with getting that area cleaned up to DEHEC satisfaction. And with that, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, just to jump right into old business, the first matter before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 1-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ford Pack LLC located on Ford Street from RM 2 to DRD. Ms. Cotty joins us this evening. Any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 1-2021?
No, sir.
Comes to us without any new or additional information. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second. End of second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions for comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have the second and final reading of ordinance number 2-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Elijah Terry located at 717 East Pointset Street from RM 1 to C2. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 2-2021?
No updates from staff.
Counsel, comes without any new or additional information, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
End of second. Do we have, you have a second? Okay, I talked over you there. Motion, and second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Third item before us is the second and final reading of ordinance number 3-2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Delta Express Incorporated located at 325 Old Jones Road by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of S1 for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information regarding 3-2021?
Yes, there is an error in the ordinance. The acreage should be .53 acres, and so, we are suggesting an amendment to that ordinance.
So, the, so the only...
Yeah, it was a clerical error. It said 58.56, but it should be .53 acres.
Just a little bit off, but not bad. Second and final reading comes with that note. Do we need to amend the ordinance?
Yes, sir. I would just recommend a motion to amend, as staff suggested, second and then vote.
I'll entertain a motion to receive as amended by staff. So moved. Second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions for comments? Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 4-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by Delta Express located on Old Jones Road from RM 2 to S1. Is this piece encumbered in the other, or is this a separate piece?
It is separate.
Okay. This comes before you for discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Ordinance number, do you have any new or additional information in that piece?
No, sorry.
In regard to that piece, comes to us for discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion, and second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 5-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Sunnyside Greer LLC located at 503 East Fairview Avenue from C2 to DRD. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 5-2021?
No, sir.
You hear from staff, there is no new or additional information. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Others? Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 6-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Raymond Gibbs located on Earl Street from C2 to RM 2. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to 6-2021?
No, there's no new information.
I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
End of second. Second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 7-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Linda Kason located at 210 Campbell Avenue from R12 to R10. This comes, does this come with any recommendation or update on information, Ms. Cotty?
No updates.
Comes to us without additional information. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Ordinance number 7-2021.
So moved. Second.
End of second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 8-2021. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Code of Ordinance, Section 35-4, Article 1, Chapter 35, Flood Damage Prevention, to reflect the date of the current flood insurance rate map and the flood insurance study. This comes as second reading. I will assume without note from staff that this is good to go.
Note, there's no new additional information.
Thanks, sir. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Ordinance number 8-2021.
So moved.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 9-2021. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended and restated economic development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, CP Greer LLC, WFC GSP Glock III Owner 8 LLC with respect to infrastructure credits to be applied against fee in lieu of tax payments related to certain investments in the city and related other matters. Mr. Mayorman, any new or additional information to ordinance number 9-2021?
No, sir.
Comes to us ready to go. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Ordinance number 9-2021.
So moved.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, having dispensed of nine old matters, we'll move to new, new business. First of which is the first reading of ordinance number 10-2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Roberta Hurley located on Henderson Gap Road by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of R15 for said property. Ms. Cotty, would you bring us information in that regard, please?
Sure. The applicant is Josiah Potts. Again, this is located along Henderson Gap Road. They are, the existing zoning is Greenville County, R15, single family, and they are requesting to annex and zone to R15 residential district. This is an aerial of the property. They are planning to also combine with a portion of the property to the north and develop as an R15 subdivision. That is, you can see right here, that portion of the north is already R15, so they are planning to bring this piece in and combine with part of it. That's the Baptist camp. Future land use is suburban neighborhood community, and this is a street view of the property. Planning Commission did hear this case. It was initially brought to them as a package with a rezoning, again, with that piece to the north that they plan to combine with as a DRD. Planning Commission recommended denial of the DRD, and they recommended for the annexation, that they recommended if it were to be annexed, their recommendation were to be R15 instead of DRD. So, the applicant did decide to take Planning Commission's recommendation, and they withdrew the DRD rezoning piece, and they decided to move forward with R15 for the annexation. So, Planning Commission's recommendation is approval. It was just kind of an interesting way to get to that approval, so.
A show of hands, the owner of the property or representatives of the owner of the property with us this evening? Stand by, we may. If y'all would like to add anything to the conversation, this may be the most appropriate time to do it. So, if you'd like to come to the podium, we'll entertain any comments that you'd like to give.
Originally, we had intended for this to be a townhome development of approximately 88 attached homes. Now, what we have planned, and what you'll probably see in the near future at one of these meetings again, is a approximately 45-unit, single-family detached development. We're happy to send more information to you guys if you want. We're in the process of working with Trust Homes. The developer next door, or the builder next door, we're looking at doing homes between $350,000 to $450,000, between 2,500 and 3,200 square feet. We will, at some point, be applying for a cluster development. I don't know if that's a, you know, a separate thing, but we can, you know, we're happy to share any additional information as needed.
Anything else you'd like to add to the conversation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you'll be available, if a question comes up, we'll call you back if we need you. Thank you for coming this evening. Ms. Cotty, procedurally, where do we go from here? This would be first reading on the annexation, so we take care of the annexation.
Yes, and there's no need to rezone the other portion because it's already R15, so they just withdrew that request.
We were hoping on the annexation, like, counsel. I'll entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion on ordinance number 10-2021.
So moved.
Have a motion, and second floor is open for discussion.
With DRD, that was going to be townhomes?
Yes, sir. It was up to 90 units.
Okay. And had the DRD agreement, had it been kind of worked through, or is it just that they're looking for DRD?
They brought it forward to our planning advisory committee, and then they brought that forward to Planning Commission. However, after Planning Commission recommended denial, and speaking to a few council members, I believe, they decided to take Planning Commission's recommendation and move forward with R15 instead of a DRD.
What was the rationale for that?
Exactly.
For Planning Commission's?
For changing the zoning controls. What did the Planning Commission dislodge when it did?
The Planning Commission mostly had concerns with the proposed layout. There was one ingress egress, and they had a lot of concerns about parking with the townhomes, and were concerned that emergency access would have trouble getting through the site. They did have two parking spots per unit, which is the requirement for all of our residential development, and the fire marshal did review the, the site plan and didn't have concerns with it. But planning, several members of the Planning Commission expressed concern with emergency access and parking.
There was something a little unique about the units, right? As far as, was it just that there was one space per unit, and then they had some additional parking, and that gave them the ability to count as two?
No, they had one garage and one space in their driveway. And so, that counted as two.
So, that was two in the DRD?
Mm-hmm.
So, help me understand this. Now, you said they have problems with the emergency vehicles. Well, what's the difference now that it's R15 versus?
I mean, the layout is very similar. It is going to be less units than townhomes, but...
But now, with townhomes, what is the statistic on automobiles versus single resident?
I'm not certain what the ratio is, but like I said, our ordinance requires two per unit regardless of detached or attached, so.
I don't know if this is the case, and if the Baptist is fine with R15, but we've got folks who are, who have said, you know, here's what we're going to do, and we commit your requirements. Then they're going before a board that is reviewing things on our behalf, and they are making, they're increasing requirements without...
They're making decisions based on feelings.
And that's, that's the way I see it, and I might be interpreting that wrong, but I know with the DRD, there's more, you know, the more legal for us to work with a developer in the design.
Yes, sir, there is. They, Planning Commission could have tabled and asked them to incorporate changes, but they made a recommendation for denial, and it did pass.
Ms. Cotty, in your professional opinion, did their original plan of intent meet our regulations?
I mean, it's, DRD is such a flexible design district that...
They were so early in this process that...
It doesn't really, I mean, yes, it met the requirements that are in a DRD, but again, there are, there are a set of factors that you can take into account, one of them being transportation facilities and access, so staff did recommend approval of the DRD, so.
So, did they, did they change because zoning board denied? Is that the only reason that they, that they changed?
The applicant can address that if you'd like. You know, we just received word from the applicant that after the Planning Commission, they were going to take that recommendation and move forward that way.
A lot of things about that acres, yeah, it's very narrow, truly, and very curvy. I think once before, we had a project come up, never was down, that's townhomes now, or the dam, closure of the Hammett Bridge, red. There was discussed about the narrow reference, and it's a very narrow and curvy road, and I really get concerned when they start developing more property on there. I was kind of relating, I saw that it was going to be the homes instead of the townhomes. I really felt like the traffic would be less. With the houses, if you figure two cars, you know, if you've got 80 and you still figure two cars, and you can see it makes a difference in traffic. I still, being a resident in that area, and knowing how my constituents feel about it, we really, you know, do not desire anymore development on Henderson Gap. I know that there's vacant property there, and I know what's going to come, you know. There's vacant property all the way up, basically from where they're talking, after you pass the Bettis campground all the way up to Rushing Creek Road. I know there's been a lot of, several, I don't have the number to provide you with, but there's been several accidents as a matter of fatality, at least one, I know of a fatality there at Henderson Gap Road and Rushing Creek Road. Now, I was informed in the discussion with them that they plan to provide a turn lane going out from, I guess that's still in their plans, provide a turn lane going out down at the Hammett Bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of people turning there to go left and right, went to the high school, went to the Highway 14 or airport, wherever they're going, so, you know, that was a good point. But it's still, I know I measured it, one time it was like 19 feet, and the street in front of the house is actually wider than that, so, you know, you would kind of think, maybe not, I don't know, because I'm not an engineer or a road planner either, that you would think that the road, a two-way traffic road, could be wider than a residential street, but, you know, but maybe with the fact that cars are sometimes parked in residential streets, maybe that throws something into it.
And, yes, ma'am. The, the applicant did perform a traffic study with the DRD, and that restriping for the left turn lane from Hammett Bridge is still part of the R15 project as well. So, that will be an improvement that will be made.
Even with the curbsigns and speed limit signs, everybody just flies through there. Of course, there's deer crossing the road at times, and so, yeah, of course, that property will be taken up to your face.
Yeah, so, yeah, no additional improvements were recommended, but that left turn restriping at Hammett Bridge will be part of the process, no matter what. I know they've applied for an encroachment permit with SCDOT, and they'll have to get that approved before we issue a grading permit if this were to move forward.
So, if they were going to have up to 90 lots in the DRD, what does the R15...
So, the absolute maximum, just based off raw numbers, would be a maximum of 86, but the layout that we've seen from them, just given the constraints, there's a creek on the property and a lot of flood plain, they're looking probably between 42 and 47, single-family lots.
So, they wouldn't have gotten 90?
Well, townhomes have, they have smaller lots, and so, we did have a layout that did have, I believe, 88.
Now, is that 88 buildings or 88 units?
88 units.
So, 44 buildings?
Well, townhomes, so it could be a group of five or six, depending on the layout.
Sure. Fellas, if y'all will return to the podium, there appears to be some questions. Now... Now, Council, let's be clear, we don't get too far down this road. This reading tonight is for the annexation of the property. There are some legitimate concerns, I think, in terms of how we've gotten to where we are. I don't want that to interfere or flavor our discussion. It may be appropriate to get some additional information, but the item before us this evening is the annexation of the property, so. And of course, that does come with the recommendation for R-15, which is already established. And I think I know where we're going with this, but we need to, we need to be cognizant of the fact that before us tonight is the annexation, so this is, be clear on that.
Yeah, and, well, let me ask this question before I ask my other questions. It may not be necessary. The way the Planning Commission approved, well, gave the okay for R-15 was that they were going to deny the DRD. Is that correct?
Well, it's already R-15 in the county, so yes, that would have been.
So what did they, they approved it, but as R-15?
They recommended that it be zoned R-15 if it were to be annexed. Planning Commission doesn't have any authority over the annexation, so they were just issuing a recommendation on zoning, so they recommended R-15 zoning. And that was after they heard the rezoning case and, of the property to the north and they had denied, recommended denial of that DRD rezoning.
So let's make the assumption that the DRD never was applied for. County had R-15, would it have come before Planning Commission?
Nope.
Before annexation or would it have come then at all since we were just adopting the same zoning?
It would have still come forward with, if they were to apply for R-15, they still hear annexation cases, they just issue a recommendation on the zoning, not whether or not to annex the property. So their recommendation was R-15.
I understand. I, I, I will ask.
You know, and let's just, just be clear and fair to these gentlemen, they came with a project that met our standards and were turned down, yes. They, they have a financial interest in this piece of property and I know that they have talked to me and several others, which is fine. And their decision was that they weren't willing maybe to take the risk that was involved in having it turned down at a council level because it takes a super majority and so I applaud them for at least moving forward with the project. It's, you know, it may be their second go at it, but they've, they've utilized the system that we've provided and that's where we are right now.
Well, okay, I have one question. Are you satisfied, gentlemen, are you satisfied with the R-15?
Financially speaking, I mean, we all, well, as developers, density means, you know, a better return, so it definitely hurt the project significantly, but we're prepared to move forward in this fashion and we've already, like I mentioned, we've already had discussions with the builder and such, so we are prepared to move forward.
Okay. Others? Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you being here this evening. Council, the item that is before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number ten dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a property owned by Roberta Hurley located on Henderson Gap Road by one hundred percent petition to establish as any classification of R-15 for said property. We have a motion, we have a motion in second floor, we'll entertain it for discussion. Further questions, further discussion, further comments?
I just, I just get a bad taste in my mouth when you, we do zoning based on feelings because that's not the way you do business. And I might be wrong, but that's just what I feel happened, you know, and it's not right because one of the things that's always bothered me is, is when we annex and when we, when we bring people in, it's okay when I come in and I get my house built and I'm fine, but anybody else that comes in behind me, I'm going to turn the lights out, you know, the end. And I just don't, you know, I don't know if that's the way to do business.
I don't see in the minutes of the meeting from the commission, the rationale for asking for an R-15. Do you know what that was?
I'm assuming that's just because what it was for Greenville County and what the property was to the north.
Well, it's not as if we haven't changed Greenville County's annexation to DRDs in the past.
Yes, they made a motion pretty quickly after the recommendation of denial to the rezoning and didn't have much discussion in terms of the annexation.
There was no reason yet for denial?
Oh, for denial, yes, that was on the rezoning case and so they were, again, they had discussions and it was emergency access and the parking issues that they were concerned with and the number of units and the traffic on Henderson Gap.
A portion of this property that they're going to be, make their plans to build on, part of this already in the city, is that correct?
Yes, so those.
They're asking for a designation of one point seven acres.
Yes, ma'am, it will be a combination to total twenty-nine point six seven acres total. So it's a portion of that property to the north and behind it, that's that light green R-15 color, it's a portion of the Baptist camp.
Is, what is the, the density of the DRD for the Branchwood subdivision?
Hmm, I'm not.
The one that's directly below it there?
Yeah.
Over five units an acre? What would that, what would that zoning be?
Their zoning, their zone DRD, so.
So if it's five units an acre, how many, how many were they requesting for this particular project?
Theirs was up to ninety lots, which is three point zero three units per acre.
This project is less dense than the one that's directly south here, the one, the Branchwood project?
Yes, sir. Mostly because they have so much unusable land with the creek and the wetlands. They have a lot more open space than Branchwood.
So we don't have a proposed project layout yet that we, or either zone?
Well, I, I mean, I can show you what they proposed for DRD, but it's been withdrawn. We, we received a preliminary plat draft today for staff to review, but that typically does not come with a straight zoning of R-12, R-10, R-15. So, but the, the layout that we saw, I believe, was forty-two lots and they said that they met with the builder and think they could get about four more, so again, what they're looking at is between kind of forty-two to forty-seven.
That's under R-15?
Yes, sir.
And how did that change the emergency access going to an R-15?
It did.
It does not.
So it was good at DRD for emergency service?
Yeah, I mean, the, the project went to pack and the fire marshal reviewed it.
Interesting thing to be about this entire argument is fifty homes in the three hundred and fifty-four hundred thousand range and PD plus townhomes probably equates to the same number of residents and maybe even more cars than the DRD because you're more likely to have teenage driver, multiple cars and family, whereas you may have a mixture of singles and couples in the DRD. I don't know from a city standpoint that there's any difference in the two projects.
I, I think that, I think that statistic on single-family homes versus single-family attached, I think automobile count is less, something like townhome versus like a single, like you were talking about, you've got, you've got, you know, kids with cars, you've got parents with cars, so you wind up with three, four cars per house. I think, Robert?
Yeah, typically the ratio is smaller of just persons per unit when you have townhome. I know that when our representative from the Greenville County School District reviews projects, they typically don't have, they don't have concerns about any of the projects per se, but they, they have less kind of need for planning when it's a townhome project versus single-family.
I think there was one additional comment. Did you want to make a comment in regard to design?
Sir, I just have several current layouts of the R-10 zoning. We have forty-three units for that, it's just making towards fire access and all that and we use the exact same for a design layout. I'm sure if this is something y'all would just match, cause I have a couple of different layouts of the R-10 zoning, if you have a decision.
Yeah.
If I may, I would leave it. The question is annexation.
The question is annexation, so I think that's where we are in R-15 right now. Any additional comments? Hearing none, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by H. Dillard Company located on Leicester Road from R-12, single-family, to I-1. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is a rezoning request from Clarius Partners. This is an aerial of the site and then I'm going to skip forward. The dark blue I-1 that you see is the existing Clarius Park, industrial park, and they are requesting to bring in an additional piece and zone it I-1 to match the rest. Future land use does call for manufacturing and logistics. And then this is a street view of the site. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and they did recommend approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
A show of hands, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Christ, thank you for joining us, we appreciate your presence this evening. Any new or additional information you'd like to ask this conversation at this point? If you'll come to the podium, please, it'll help us keep a record of comments, thank you.
One thing I would add is that this is tied together with the economic development agreement that was earlier voted on. That agreement is covering all the existing property. We are adding fifteen acres to the entire project. And so what's happening from a development standpoint is that Clarius, along with a lot of other developers out in Spark County, are coming in with plans for, you know, four hundred to five hundred square foot buildings and they're finding the market is asking for larger buildings. So fifteen, if you can see the lines going down through the blue, I can't read the number, but on the right-hand side, that's actually owned by CP Greer, one of the entities, and on the other side is the WC entity. They'll add fifteen acres to that parcel to make it a larger tract so they can put a larger building on there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Council, I entertain a motion to receive at the purpose of discussion.
Sir, that's it.
In a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Ms. Cotty? Council, last item of new business before us this evening is the approval of purchase for grant expenditures. The Fire Department was awarded a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of new self-contained breathing apparatus. After we received the award letter, the department tested the scubas from different manufacturers and upon completed evaluation, the department decided to move with Scott Scuba from Reinhardt Fire Services. I don't see anybody from the Fire Department, any additional information to that?
Just as a by-way reminder, Council amended the budget, I think, in the fall to reflect the approval or the award of this grant. This is the end result of the procurement process.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, this evening, we have three items before us for executive session. They all qualify their state statute thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss two contractual matters, one pertaining to Project Homecoming, the second pertaining to ACE Environmental, both by state statute section thirty dash four seventy-eight-two, and then also make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project Blakely, as allowed by state statute section thirty dash four seventy-eight-five.
Come to this motion to here, a second.
Second.
Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, we'll stay in chambers. We would ask the audience, if you are not participating, if you would, to wait outside, outside of this room. You don't have to wait outside, but outside of this room for us and we will notify you when executive session is over. Council, in executive session, we've considered three matters, one a contractual matter, two a contractual matter and one a economic development matter. We are going to take no action in regards to any of those three. I will entertain a motion if we come out of executive session.
Yes, sir.
Motion in the second. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.